Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome. Happy New Year to everyone. Welcome to the Planning Board's first meeting of the year 2020. We're gonna have the Flag Salute by Vice Chair Rosori and invocation by Mas Hadian. Please stand up.
Dear Lord, we thank you for this day and the many blessings we have received. As this meeting of the new year and the new decade begins, this evening, I pray for each person here. Give us listening ears and thoughtful words. Give us presence of mind and an open heart. Amen.
Please join me in saluting our flag. At Pledge of Allegiance, to the might of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which is God, one nation, united, God, individual, liberty, and justice.
Mr. Planbeck, roll call piece?
Certainly. Board Member Gimboa?
Present.
Board Member Lou?
Present.
Board Member Hadian?
Present.
Vice Chair Rosori?
I am here.
And Chair Atticanian?
Present.
Any announcements?
Uh, we have no announcements tonight.
All right, this is the time and place for the hearing on project number 19-0001022 concerning an application for an administrative use permit and conditional use permit allowing for the operation of a restaurant use without providing additional parking and for the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place. Gourmet Romano is the name of the establishment. The project is located at 4017 Riverside Drive, Suite C. Before we begin, do any planning board members have any legal or other conflict of interest relating to this hearing?
No.
No.
No. Have any planning board members had any communications, including written or oral, with the applicant or the applicant's representative or any other person?
No.
No.
No. Mr. Planbeck, have the notices as required by law been given?
Yes, they have.
Are there any written communications on this matter?
Uh, yes, we received an additional email today that was provided to the board, left down your chair, and also for members of the public, we left the email back on the dais.
Thank you. Now, at this time, will the representative of the Community Development Department please introduce yourself and summarize the matter for us?
Good evening, Chair Atticanian and members of the board. My name is Lucia Huang, and I am a planning technician with the Planning Division. Can I please have the presentation? Thank you. I am here today to present to you the proposed administrative use permit and conditional use permit for the property located at 4017 Riverside Drive, Suite C. The applicant applying for the AUP and CUP is Karin Galistian for Gourmet Romano, which is an existing restaurant. Mr. Galistian is requesting an AUP and CUP to allow for the operation of a restaurant use without providing additional parking and for the onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine in conjunction with this restaurant. The project is located at 4017 Riverside Drive, Suite C, and is zoned MDC3, Media District General Business. To the east is a property zoned MDC3 that contains a full-service sit-down restaurant. To the west is a structure with media-related offices and uses, banks, and medical offices. To the north is MDC2 and has media-related offices and uses, and to the south is the parking lot for the Chipotle. Here is another image highlighting the Gourmet Romano tenant space within the mini-mall facility. The mini-mall has one other restaurant and one media-related office. The applicant is requesting approval for an administrative use permit and conditional use permit to allow for the operation of a restaurant use without providing additional parking and onsite sale and consumption of beer and wine as an incidental use to the existing restaurant. As part of this request, the modifications to the exterior and interior of the building, including adding tables with chairs. No structural modifications are proposed. Additionally, the Burbank Municipal Code limits restaurants with incidental alcohol to no more than 35% of the total revenue to come from alcohol sales. This limitation is intended to ensure that the restaurant continues to operate as a restaurant and that the sale of alcohol is incidental. Shown is the floor plan and interior without tables and chairs. Gourmet Romano is located within a 973-square-foot tenant space and currently functions as a takeout restaurant. The planning board approvals of the AUP and CUP would allow the applicant to change operations from a takeout establishment to a sit-down restaurant that would allow for the sale of beer and wine. To accommodate the sale of, to accommodate the change in operations, the applicant proposes to amend their existing floor plan to include six interior tables with seating. All outdoor seating will require a Public Works encroachment permit. As shown in the proposed floor plan, no area is exclusively dedicated to the sale or consumption of alcohol. Gourmet Romano would operate the incidental alcohol sales between the restaurant hours of 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., Sunday through Thursday, and 8:00 a.m. through 11:00 p.m., Friday through Saturday. The alcohol service would stop 30 minutes before closing, and the establishment will require employees who sell or service alcoholic beverages to complete a training program for responsible selling and servicing. Additionally, all sale and consumption of the alcohol will be limited to the area within the restaurant building. There are six existing parking spaces to the rear of the building and a drive aisle that is used for the existing valet operation. The valet is currently being voluntarily operated, as there are no existing city of Burbank entitlements requiring the valet. Therefore, it can cease operation at any time. Per the Burbank Municipal Code, when a change of use occurs, the applicant is to provide the net new parking required under current standards for the new use. At 973 square feet, the proposed restaurant would require a total of seven net new parking spaces. The valet parking operation provides a capacity to park 10 additional vehicles. To ensure that the project site be able to support the type and quantity of traffic, the applicant proposes to operate the existing valet throughout the life of the project. This requirement would be a condition of approval. The valet operator provides non-exclusive parking, which is available to the general public for a fee of $8, and a reduced cost for Gourmet Romano patrons. The valet company provides trained personnel to operate the valet system from 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. during the hours anticipated to have the highest parking demand. Capacity for a total of 10 parking spaces would be provided on the property with the valet parking operation. These spaces are in addition to the six in the rear. The applicant would be required to operate the valet parking in accordance with the valet parking plan shown in the slide above. This valet parking plan has been reviewed and approved by the city traffic engineer and the city planner. While valet parking cannot be used to provide code-compliant parking for the sit-down restaurant, the proposed sit-down restaurant with valet would provide project and public benefits. One such benefit is that it is compatible with the existing uses on surrounding properties. Additionally, integrating the valet's operations as project conditions for the sit-down restaurant ensures the ongoing operation of the valet and safe and convenient parking and circulation. It also increases the parking capacity of the surrounding neighborhood with its non-exclusive valet. Having additional parking helps promote the viability of a locally-serving business, and finally, it contributes to the long-term city goals of having managed parking in the Media District. In light of the foregoing, staff has determined that the administrative use permit and conditional use permit to allow Gourmet Romano to operate a restaurant use without providing additional parking and to have the incidental sale and consumption of beer and wine in conjunction with a sit-down restaurant is consistent with the zoning code and will have minimal impacts to the surrounding area. Therefore, staff recommends the planning board approve a resolution of the planning board of the City of Burbank approving project number 19-0001022 for an administrative use permit and a conditional use permit at 4017 Riverside Drive, Suite C, allowing for the operation of a restaurant use without providing additional parking and for the incidental sale of beer and wine for onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place, Gourmet Romano, based on the findings of fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval. This concludes staff's presentation, and we are available for questions.
Thank you for that report, first one of the year 2020. Before we open up the hearing to the public, I will invite the applicant or their representative to address the planning board. You will have a maximum time of 15 minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Patrick Panzerello, and I live in North Hills, California, and I'm a restaurant consultant, and I'm here representing the applicant. Him and his wife are here sitting with me today. The location is a small mom-and-pop restaurant, and it's actually operated by both of the applicants. They're both on the premises daily operating it. They operate with four other employees. They have a chef that actually walks to the location, he lives nearby, and another employee that rides a scooter into the facility, and two other employees that use either Uber or Lyft to come to our facility. Many of our customers are doing that also. This place opened in 2018. The couple were looking for a location in Burbank, and they've been, you know, even downtown, they looked in over on the Riverside area too, and they came across this location that had been closed for several years. And they decided to remodel it, went through Burbank Building and Safety, and got permits to build the restaurant, but because there wasn't sufficient parking, it was a takeout rather than a sit-down restaurant, which brings us here today. They want to get seating approved and also a beer and wine license too. The restaurant is less than 1,000 square feet, and about 70% of that is taken up by the kitchen and the restroom and such. There's a small 145-square-foot area in the front, and we're planning on putting up to 18 seats there, and also at the fronts of the sidewalk along Riverside, we're hoping to put four to six seats there also, so a total of maybe 24 seats. Parking is a real issue in this block, and I've witnessed it myself. I've been there over a dozen times, and we were able to get a valet service to help us and our needs, and we're also going to be parking for the entire block, whether that's for our business or not. We'll be helping people, you know, that congestion. We're in the media center area, and I'd say about almost 90% of our customers in the afternoon are walk-ins from the studios or the offices nearby. We get some people driving, our valet service is handling that too, or they park elsewhere and come into the facility. In the evening, we have less media people and less offices. We have a lot of people coming from their homes and such, even people walking from their homes to for our facility. We're finding that many people are actually using the Uber, Lyft, other public transport areas, especially outside the area. My customer, Karin Galistian, used to live in Burbank, and him and his wife live nearby right here in Sherman Oaks, and they own a nutrition center also in Toluca Lake. They're big into nutrition, and they wanted to open up a facility that was not only healthy but also organic, and all the products they use in the facility is pure organic products and such too. And the reason it's called Gourmet Romano, it's not your regular mom-and-pop pizza place. We don't usually even sell cheese or pepperoni pizzas. They're all prepared, and the menu ingredients are prepared by the chef himself, and we were able to have a dozen special pizzas. And they're also introducing also pastas too with different toppings and such also. The location, as I said, has been open about three years. The landlord tells us that in the past, there used to be a bar with a full alcohol license, so alcohol was on the premises before, as we're told also. We're hoping that you'll follow the recommendation of the planning department and support to the request with all the conditions attached. The operators are very responsible people, and they want to be responsible neighbors, and they have been. As you can see, none of the neighbors are here this evening, and all the mailing letters have gone out, and that eight-foot signs in front of the building now for about three weeks. So, we're hoping you get your support also. We have had a great reception from the neighbors and the people working in the area. We've become pretty popular, and it's time, we got some tables and chairs and some beer and wine license. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing to hear from any persons in the audience who wish to speak on this matter. Each person may address the planning board for a maximum time of three minutes. I'm, are you Mr. Harry Narcissian?
No, thank you.
Are you Patrick Pozarello? Okay.
My name is Peter Generalis. I'm sorry, I didn't.
Have you filled out a card?
I didn't sign it, I'm sorry.
That's all.
I got here right at the closing.
Would you be kind enough to fill a card, and I'll call these people up, and we'll call you next?
Certainly, certainly.
Henry Narcissian?
Hi, my name is Harry Narcissian. I'm with the parking company over at Karin's Restaurant, and basically, that area is very busy, as it is with all the restaurants around, but with the valet being there, it's not, we haven't been full for the past six months that we operated at the location. So with him getting the license for the alcohol license, I don't think that's gonna affect our business in a bad way, because we have enough room to park all the cars. So, I think it would be fair for the whole neighborhood to approve his alcohol license, because it'll bring in more business for the area. So, that's about it. I have nothing else to add. Is there any questions regarding parking?
We'll get to it. Thank you. I have a card, the applicant, Karin Galistian? I said, "Karin," I'm assuming that's gotten?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I speak after Peter?
Called your name, step up to the microphone and make your statement.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this meeting, and I'm the applicant. I used to live in Burbank City back to 2004 to 2007, and kind of I love this city, and I'm kind of back, and this is my first restaurant, and considering to find the first location, I've been looking several cities, but I came to the Burbank because it's unique and unique for type of cuisine that we're introducing. It's a very unique Italian but Roman cuisine, and I hope you're gonna approve this, because we've followed all the codes and all the procedures, and I'm gonna be, make sure that the staff can get professional training for the alcohol serving, and also to benefit city and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Corey Summers.
Hi, everybody. I live in Burbank on the Toluca Lake border, and so frequently for me to go to restaurants such as Gourmet Romano or Priscilla's or Red Maple, it's an Uber or a walk, but it's really nice to live in such close proximity, and I have to tell you, what they serve is delicious, it's healthy, I'm so excited about it as an option, and I think it would be wonderful that they would be granted this to just really improve their business and increase what they have to offer. So I just thank you guys for listening.
Thank you. Peters? You'll have to tell us what your last name is, because I can't make it.
Generalis.
Generalis?
Yes, just like general.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, thank you, board members. I'm a life, lifetime resident of Burbank, I'm also the immediate past president of the Toluca Lake Chamber of Commerce, and this restaurant that Kevin and Serena have opened is right on the border of our little jurisdiction. I'd like to say, you know, in addition to what everyone else has said, I can't think of a nicer young couple. I've known them for maybe six years now, terrific, delightful people, they're hard workers, they're putting, they've put together a beautiful restaurant. The food is really, really good. I think all of you, if you haven't tried it yet, you should go down and try it. It's a wonderful addition to the neighborhood, to Toluca Lake and Burbank, and as far as parking goes, parking in Toluca Lake has always been bad. It's an ongoing thing that we're all trying to find a solution to. I find that when I go to their restaurant, there's, there seems to be ample parking along Alameda if you, if you don't want to use their readily available valet service. So, if you need to, if you know where to park, you can definitely find it. So again, I can't think of any reason why, you know, why anyone would want to deny them the permit, because I think it's just gonna make their business all the greater, and I wish them all the best. I think they're gonna grow and eventually open up many more locations, hopefully. That's pretty much what I want to say. They're great people, great restaurant.
Thank you. Would the representative of the Community Development Department like to make any further comments?
No further comments, thank you.
She's pleading the fifth. Does the applicant or their representative wish to make any further comments? You may have a maximum time of 10 minutes for any statements you make.
No comments.
No comments. Does the board have any questions of staff or the applicant? Yes?
For staff, what's the, obviously, we have one of the parking around the area, what's the bike parking situation around the area? Are there any public racks around?
We're not aware of any, any public racks in the area.
Actually, I think Lemonade is close by, is that what it's called? It's not close by?
I want to say Chipotle, but I'm not 100% sure across the street. Just not 100% sure. I think they do have bike racks though.
Anyone else?
I have a question for staff. For the outdoor seating, is there any safety barrier being predicted, like pipe bollards or anything?
Just answer that question. Board Member Hadian, when an applicant comes in to do sidewalk seating, they generally come in, they're required to put up a barrier, that's reviewed by the city during that application process. So there's a separate application process to provide outdoor seating. So we'll review the proposed chairs and tables and the barrier with that application.
Thank you.
Could I add to that? The ABC also requires a barrier.
Especially with what happened on Glen Oaks. We really want to have that. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have one question, staff. There was a mention that the applicant was going to operate the parking service for the duration of the, I'm assuming, term of the lease. What's the term of the lease? How long is it?
It's five with a renewal of five.
And are they required to have the parking services for the option periods? Is, does that?
The lease is for five years, it's supposed to be a five-year renewal, and we volunteer the valet service through the entire operation with beer and wine sales and seating.
I understand, but so would that, when you say entire operation, would that include any renewal periods?
Yes, it does. You know, whenever, well, all the time that we're in operation, whether it's today or 10 years from now, we'll have the valet service.
All right, thank you for the clarification.
Just a note, Chairman, Condition 25, the conditions of approval, require that the valet service be provided during the lifetime of the restaurant. So it's a condition of approval of this permit that they provide the valet parking for the life of the restaurant.
For the life of the restaurant?
For the restaurant, correct.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? For staff, okay. I now declare the hearing closed, and the planning board will now deliberate. What is the planning board's pleasure? Mas Hadian?
I'm supporting the project. They have created very good design in the very small space that they had, and everything looks good, especially with the provided parking valet service.
Mr. Gimboa?
I too agree. I like the project and the proposed solutions to everything. I would like to maybe get this opportunity, because it is a healthy-themed restaurant, and parking is an issue here to, to maybe add a condition to have one bike rack on, in front of that thing, front of their establishment, provide for the neighborhood, shows commitment to kind of a, the healthy, active transportation, and can maybe provide a couple, a safe place for patrons to park while they use it.
Can we just condition that on going through the engineering staff to make sure they can put a bike rack?
Sure, maybe like within a certain amount of feet, like, that might be, you know?
We can work with Public Works staff to see if there's a proper location to install, the applicant install a bike rack.
Thank you. Sleep.
I'm also in support of the project and for the conditional use permit and the administrative use permit. Thank you for doing business in Burbank, and we're happy to support your continued success.
Thank you. Vice Chair Rosori?
I'll just make the motion unless you have any final comments.
Well, we've, we came across another location about a year back, where the challenge was the parking, and we asked proprietor to go back and see if they could provide, get the building next door, and unfortunately, they weren't able to. And we know parking is a bad situation, parking situation is pretty bad in this area. It's a creative solution. I think it works for everyone. I'm in support of the AUP and the CUP. Motion?
The only, yeah, the only difference in that other case was, this is an existing restaurant, the other one was new, starting out, so there was a different set of rules. So, but yeah, I'm, I'm ready to go. Adopt a resolution of the planning board of the City of Burbank approving project number 19-0001022 for administrative use permit and conditional use permit at 4017 Riverside Drive, Suite C, allowing for the operation of a restaurant use without providing additional parking and for the incidental sale of beer and wine for an onsite consumption in conjunction with the operation of a bona fide public eating place, Gourmet Romano, based on the findings of the fact and subject to the based on the findings of the fact and subject to the recommended conditions of approval, subject to the bike rack.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Board Member Gambola?
Yes.
Board Member Lou?
Yes.
Chair Attikunian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Unanimous. All right, now it's time for oral communications. Oral communications are limited to three minutes. Do we have any cards? Not seeing, not seeing any. We'll move on to reports.
We have no reports.
No reports. All right, let's move on to the approval of the minutes from the December 16th meeting. Has anyone wants to make a motion on that?
So moved.
All right?
Second.
All right, let's take a roll.
Board Member Gambola?
Yes.
Board Member Lou?
Yes.
Chair Attikunian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Rosati?
Yes.
Board Member Hadian?
Yes.
All right. Planning board members may introduce new items for discussion, but no action may take place except to place the item on a future agenda. Any such items? Not at this time. City planner comments, please?
No comments.
All right, well, thank you very much for joining us for the first meeting of 2020. We'll see you next time.